You are live, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, James. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the Anna Reynolds School Project Building Committee to order. It is October 21st, 2021, is about 5:18. And first order of business is rule call. Jeff? Maybe we're still having trouble. I'll do it. Jeremy Wetzel's.
I'm here.
Cindy Stam.
Here.
Chris Minor.
Here.
Carol Dugan.
Here.
Mike Camillo.
Here.
Steven Sylvia.
He will, he will be here.
He's here now. He's, I see him. He's muted. Unmute Steve and say here for the record.
I, I'm muted in here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I believe I have everybody, correct? Did I skip anyone? No. Myself, I'm here. James, are you still with us or no?
I am with you.
Okay, Jeff, can you hear me now? Can you speak to us or no?
I can, I can hear you. I don't know if you can hear me.
I can. We can hear you now.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so Jeff is back with us then. All right. So, public participation, we actually have no attendees on the, on the public side of the meeting, so we're gonna move right to take action of prior meeting minutes. I believe it is the October 7th meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes as written.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2021.
Motion, motion made by Cindy Stam and a second.
Second.
Second by Carol Dugan. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Yeah, Steve, I'm gonna abstain just because I was unable to attend. I had technical difficulties that night.
Okay. So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously with one extension. Chris Minor. Architects update. Jennifer. Good afternoon. We started demo this week, Jennifer. Oh, you're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I saw that demo started as well when I was at the meeting today. So, yeah, it's telling us it's time.
Yeah.
Um, so as, as far as our update goes, first, I do wanna say thank you to, I know the, the Town Council Planning and Zoning and Steve Woods for getting the 8-24, you know, formality, the referral and approval, taking care of. So, I appreciate that, that hurdle that was, that was good to hear.
Actually, on that, Jennifer, Jeff, is there anything that the council has to do now? Obviously, the TP and Z has moved along with a favorable position on it, so.
The building committee ordinance says that they shall refer to TPZ for an 8-24 referral, and that's really all it says they have to do.
Okay, so then we're done. You're right. We are done with it then. Okay. It went very smoothly, so it was, it was a pleasure to walk it through. There was very few questions and it's the only thing behind us, so we're, no, one less hurdle to jump over. Thank you, Jennifer, for, for giving me the information that I needed.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Um, we also, it, just this week, we received updated hazardous materials drawings and information beyond what was in the design development set. So, these updates are because of the, the testing and reports that they had done, further information. So, the drawings are updated. We started reviewing those along with the construction manager. Marty was in a meeting with us today, too, so that we can discuss strategies with abatement and timing of everything. So, it was great to get, to get an update. They're currently, EnviroMed is the hazardous materials consultant that you work with, or that the town works with. So, they are currently revising their estimate as well. They're making updates to that because they've had, they have more information now than they had during schematic design. So, we are currently still in the process. We're moving so we can keep on schedule and, and get this thing, you know, essentially out to bid sooner. So, we're continuing to work into construction documents at the same time I reported last week that the, the construction manager has the design development set. They're looking at some constructability things, and they're looking at doing an estimate from that. So, in our estimator as well, Castle Booze hires an estimator. They're currently estimating from the design developments that both entities, our estimator and the CM, are looking through the drawings. They're asking questions, so we're responding to questions so they can get the numbers, you know, more accurate if there's something that's confusing to them. So, we're working through that. They're working through that, and they anticipate having the estimate ready for reconciliation by the end of the month. And on, and then after that reconciliation, on the, on November 18th, that building committee meeting, we are hoping that with information from the estimate, that you could see where things are, that things are on budget, I, I hope, and, and we've had our design development set. We're hoping for design development approval at that time. So, if things are on track, on budget, that is an upcoming approval that we're hoping for from the, the building committee. But we are really waiting to see how the estimate is, you know, whether everything's in line or not. I do have renderings to present to you today. If I could share my screen.
You should have the ability to do that.
Could I do that?
James usually. Yep.
And, okay.
So, I could see your wallpaper, so.
Yeah, you can see a lot of that, which is not what you were supposed to see. So, of course, I thought I had this all queued up. I, I'm gonna have to go back into it. That's not right. I'm, um, there we go. Now I know what I'm up to. There we go. Sorry about that hiccup. I'm normally in the office with a little bit better setup, but I wasn't able to be in the office for this. So, the renderings, I, I'm presenting. Can you, do you see the screen or not?
No, all we could see is your wallpaper, the same screen as you initially went up.
Well, that's unfortunate. Okay. Um.
Make sure you select the window and then hit share at the bottom, otherwise it won't enable it.
Right. Okay, let's see if I can get back to this. I'm gonna stop share and share again. Let's try. I'm not, do you see the rendering now or no?
Yes, now we do.
Oh, great. All right, thank you. Um, so this is a, an image of the front entrance, and in this image, you'll see that we were updating the building envelope to some extent. So, some of the, the brick masonry does remain at the, at the previous, the last addition that you did is in the foreground on the right. So, that was a brick masonry addition, and we're leaving some of that in place, but we are replacing the windows, replacing some panels that were in that addition. We're giving a whole new exterior wall to the front entrance and administration area. So, that's all new windows. Wall panels, those are metal wall panels in the dark color and in that, like terracotta color. And below that is a precast panel up to three foot four above grade. That precast panel, so it's like a, you know, hard concrete panel that is also below the windows on the right-hand side, and that occurs also below the window system at the cafeteria. So, this box on the left is the, the cafeteria, still maintaining a lot of the exterior brick masonry. But we're taking out between the masonry walls. There currently is an existing window wall system and some blue panels in there, and we're completely replacing, replacing that. Replacing doors at the cafeteria and at the main entrance, creating our secure vestibule inbound there. And a new canopy. Right now, you don't have a canopy. I think originally when the building was built in the 50s, there was a front entrance canopy. So, you've seen a, a notion of this rendering previously with the canopy. This is just a little bit more refined. So, there's that, the entrance canopies. So, as students are dropped off along this extended now parent drop-off, they will have some covering and visitors, you know, etc., as they're, as they're waiting at the front doors to be buzzed in, a visitor will be undercover, which is nice. So, we were trying to choose colors that would work well with the existing brick because there is still some left on the building. And other things to note, there's new roof edge because there's a new roof planned, of course, for the, for the facility. We have new roof edge completely around the building, and that's also the dark bronze type color that you see. We discussed ballards previously for security measures. There are ballards. You do have ballards now, too, but we'll have new ballards along that, that walkway in front. And the new crosswalk that takes us to, to some of that parking that's at the front of the building. The, there's benches at the front plaza area. And there's some stone cladding is what we're proposing on those benches, and at a wall, there's a retaining wall that's in front of the cafeteria. So, we're also proposing a veneer, a stone veneer on that wall as well. The, the focus of this rendering and the next one I'm going to show are primarily for the exterior envelope, the, the general design, the colors, materials, that kind of thing is the focus. The site portion of, of the renderings is not exact 100%, and I say that because I know that the chairman is probably got a pretty keen eye on that. So, the, I do just want, wanna say that the plantings aren't the exact plantings that, that we're proposing. There's some, some that are close, but the model, we, we really were focusing on modeling the building and just trying to get the site good enough to represent, at this point, the, the flow and some, some context. The other rendering I'd like to show, this is actually on the west side of the building. The play, this is outside of the, what, right, what right now is generally first grade classrooms. Those are rooms that have direct access currently to an outdoor play area on the west side. And we discussed before for security reasons and other reasons, too, that classrooms would not have direct access to the exterior. So, the, the only access to the play area in this wing of the building is really in the middle of the, of the, the wing. That's not from a classroom that connects back into the corridor, the main corridor. So, students would funnel out during recess or other outdoor time. If they're coming out to the west side play area, they'd come out those doors and down to grade a little bit around this, this feature. We did, while this isn't a site presentation so much, I, I do wanna mention, you probably see some lawn area here. There's more asphalt today at the school than what we're planning for. We, we have discussed with various entities, the, the principal and others at the district in eliminating a small portion of the asphalt paving that's kind of in the corner in one of the, the kinks in the building. So, there still is plenty of asphalt there for play area, but there is some lawn that we're reintroducing. So, that we do have the same materials on the, this classroom wing, which it's the same that's proposed for what we call the lower wing on the east side, the other 1950s portion of the building, where we're completely taking out the exterior wall on both of those wings on the outside as well as on the courtyard side. Those exterior walls are completely coming out. The only thing that's left are small portions of brick masonry that exist now, but otherwise, we take that all out, and we were proposing, again, the precast concrete sill up to three foot four. That height is in accordance with the state security guidelines that, that we review and discuss with the district. So, that three foot four pretty much becomes a baseline. It's great for durability. It's also good for security. So, the precast sill height at three foot four, aluminum windows above that. And again, metal panel, two different colors and two different textures to provide interest and break up this long wing, which again is long on the east side of the building as well. There's a small canopy at the, any of the doors which lead to either the courtyard in those locations or out to the play area, for instance. There'll be new canopies above those entrances, exit. Um, those are really the two main elevations I wanted to show you. This is really, I, I'll throw it up here, but for a quick reminder, although this is a poor photo, I wish I had a lighter one of the existing versus the proposed new. So, you can, you know, I guess, get an idea of the replacement of some of the older elements, like windows and panels, the blue panel, even at the cafeteria, and even the wall, the window panels at the, the clear story windows at the top of the cafeteria are being replaced by new windows and some panel infills as well. We'll have a much better view of the front entrance and a view out for the administration as well because landscaping is going to be revised in the front. And as far as the other wing, that's just a, a kind of a quick snapshot of where we are today on the top and where we're, where we're headed, we think so. Um, are there any questions about the renderings and the ideas that I've presented?
Carol?
Uh, I'm wondering, and I can't tell from the picture, will the classroom windows be able to be opened?
That's a great question. So, the windows in the classrooms are all going to be operable. There's sliding windows. So, there is a portion that's fixed and a portion that will slide. So, each classroom will have that, that feature. There is, um, very specifically, not the whole thing will slide. So, actually, the two, the two bottom panels of glazing slide together, and then the top panels are always fixed, actually, if it matters, so.
So, you can get fresh air in the classroom. That was like.
And get fresh air. Yes.
My other question was, on the playground area, I don't see any trees there. Is there any plan for shade?
Right. Um, this, again, wasn't, sorry to reiterate, but it wasn't the focus so much on, on the site model, but the trees are really back near, near the playground area. I'm not, to see if there's some indication where maybe plantings would be in the new lawn area that we're providing instead of the asphalt. But, um, generally along the west side or along the playscapes, the, there's not new plantings, new trees or anything planned for that area.
Okay, I was just concerned about that because when it is hot out there and there's no room, there's no place for shade, the shade does not always come. We have that beautiful wooded area there.
Right.
So, just something maybe to keep in mind for this playground.
Okay. So noted. Thank you. Shading, trees, yep.
Chris?
Thanks, Steve. Just one more thing, Jennifer, to, to just remember. We brought it up early on. Is there anything that we can work on in terms of the elevation for ground level access to the roofs that we've had some kids get up there and require the fire department to go get them off the roofs?
So, we're trying. I'm sorry, continue.
Either, yeah, either by an elevation change or any type of the, uh, the deterrent materials that are right on the, the edge of the aluminum flashing, I know was what was used at the town hall to just not get them up there to begin with.
Okay. Um, I'm interested in what was done at the town hall as a deterrent. I'm honestly not familiar with that. We were trying to be conscious of not having places to step. So, the profile of the precast, for instance, the precast band, we're trying not to set back the metal panels from that. It's a very small step. I wonder if I have, bear with me for a second. Maybe this will help.
Yeah, 'cause if I remember correctly, they were getting up on the west southwest corner. I think there was a, a higher topography that got them closer, and they were able to literally go up on the window edge and, you know, just kind of shimmy themselves up on that corner.
Right. And there, there will still be some low areas of the building, things that may, that we can't fully resolve without taking off existing canopies, for instance. You know, I will say there's, um, and we've had a lot of discussion about, is there something that we could do, let's go do it overall.
That detail that you just had up, Jennifer, though, shows are pretty good. You've eliminated a good portion of, of the step on the sill. There's not much. There's only an inch, inch and a half of sill there, maybe two inches. It's not.
Right.
Right.
We need it a little bit because of where the window needs to sit in the elevation and be secured and everything, and even at the jams, which you can't really see. It's just how we work out details.
And you need water to run away from the building also.
Right. Yeah. So, where there's metal wall panel, we're trying to hardly have any lift. The window, because of where it needs to sit, we're gonna have a little bit of, of an edge there at the precast. The window system is, it's center glazed, but, you know, I don't know that you're gonna get much purchase on the little ledge at the glass.
Yeah, so I know that I can at least give you a, a basic information for that material. It's almost like a, maybe a quarter inch or so mill thickness plastic that's uncomfortable to grab onto to be able to make the initial pull to go up to the roof. Not, not to the point of getting hurt, but
Right.
it, it does, doesn't allow you to really get a good grasp to go up.
Okay.
And actually, this detail, again, you're showing from that sill, that water sill there up to the, to the roof. You got, it's already eight feet, right? It's eight foot.
It is.
Yeah, so that's, that's a pretty good height.
Right.
Do we know what the height of the existing sills are now on the building? Are these lower?
So, the existing actually has an overhang, if you recall. So, there's an overhang, but the top of the metal fascia at the overhang, which isn't drawn here, but, um, we have more insulation now because of energy code, but currently, when, currently, your roof edge that comes out is
Right.
is somewhere around here. We're probably gaining, you know, one foot, two, one foot four, maybe, to our new roof edge that's gonna be, you know, up a bit higher than what you have now. So, it is a little higher in, along the classroom wings. There are, again, there is a portion of the building that we, we talk about a lot, especially Brennan and I, even considering site features. If there's a retaining wall, we don't want somebody to be able to climb up on a wall and then get on a roof. So, you know, we were talking about trying to keep certain things away from the, the building if we think that they can be used. If there's site features, we don't want people to use those site elements to get up on the roof, so we talk a lot about that. Um, the, I wonder, oh, it's not coming up. There are some low, near the cafeteria. We actually, because of the concern about security and getting on the roof, this is an older plan, but we're, we're not providing this little wing wall. But there is, there's a canopy outside of the cafeteria, an existing canopy. That canopy's, it, it's about eight feet above grade. I mean, it's, it's low, and there's a canopy here outside the kitchen, again, eight feet above grade. Um, those are still potentially vulnerable areas. I mean, eight feet is not really high, but that's an existing concrete deck that we think is, I don't want, I mean, nothing, not that it's cost prohibitive, but the extent of work involved to take off that canopy and make a higher canopy, the structural work that's involved, the demo work that's involved, seems pretty extensive. So.
Jennifer, does it make any sense to maybe do an overlay of some type of a, a vinyl canopy type structure to go fit right over the element of the existing canopy?
Um, I'm trying to, to picture what, what that really is. Are you talking about increasing that, something that would increase the height, I guess, of that canopy?
Yeah, so you wouldn't have that necessarily as a stepping stone anymore. You would have something that would cover, essentially cover that whole, the whole thing. It covered almost as if an awning style system.
Yep.
Or, you know, either a rounded canopy or a backlit canopy, something like that.
Sure. Um, yeah, that's possible. I mean, at this one particular location, the, the only thing I think that that would be a concession that we would make, which maybe is important, there are clear story windows above the canopy. So, you know, if we did an awning type or some kind of increased the, the top height of the canopy, we would be impacting the windows here in the kitchen. If, if they're naturally. Unless it was something that just was along the, the edge and didn't, didn't go back, wasn't really an awning. But if it was an awning that, that sloped from the, from the wall back, that would affect the, the natural light in that location.
May I interject?
Sure, sorry.
Thank you. Um, the original red line that you had, the horizontal line, is it possible for us to put a parapet wall there so that it discourages, you say it's at eight feet now and potentially a parapet to take it up to, say, 10 feet?
That, yes, we could look at that. Um, the, yep, we could look at that. And, and I'll consider how rainwater, how drainage would occur and stuff. I just don't wanna create a bathtub, but there are ways around that, so.
Right.
I will look at that. Yep.
Um, Chris, anything else?
No, I just, I don't know if James by any wild chance might have that anti-climb imagery available from being on the other meetings, but if he has it, maybe just to show Jennifer. available from being on the other meetings, but if he has it, maybe just to show Jennifer what we're talking about. Very simple. That's it. Thanks Steve.
Okay. Carol, you have your hand back up?
I do. One of the other places that children climb the roof is over by the kindergarten classrooms. There's that retaining wall where it used to be a garden, well, it's a garden now. It used to be a sandbox. So I don't know if there's any consideration of taking that down. But that, I've watched kids climb up. It's, if you're strong, it's not that hard to get on the roof from that, from that wall.
Yes, I think I know what you're talking about and it is going away. Boy, there's, we have a lot of pictures out there. This is at the backside of, so there's a nice little step. Is this what you're talking about? The backside of the kindergarten?
We're still looking at the.
You still have the fresh grave. It's where the old kindergarten classrooms were before the addition. It used to be a sandbox for the kids and now it's a garden.
Yes, I was trying to bring that up. I can see it, but sorry. So yes, we are getting rid of that retaining wall, actually. That's where some of the lawn area is. We're working on grades over there. We're putting some lawn area back. But we are getting rid of that, that old retaining wall from the 50s and there's a little step in it too, that I can see would be really easy for people to climb.
Yeah, I think we also have to keep in mind that oh, nice way to say this, well, I'm just gonna say it. At times, some of these are youths are like squirrels. If they got something on their mind, they're gonna find a way to get there, right? So we, we can only, we can only do so much to protect it. Back to that area out in front, the service area. And maybe the best thing to do there is just do some sort of decorative fencing and fence that area off, Jennifer. That might be the, the, the least expensive, right? Just block them out of there. Although it does pose maintenance problems, right? So to, to get in there. I don't remember if it's all going to be concrete in there or not, but and again, the fence, are we just inviting them to climb onto the fence and then get up onto the building, you know? So, uh, which is a problem down at the gas meters. That's what they're doing, right? They're climbing around, get on the gas meters. We've got that tapered overhang above them to try to deter it, but yet they use it as a, keeps them out of the gas meters, but puts them up onto the roof, so.
Right. Right, and we aren't changing the gas service. We've talked a lot about that too. We're not changing where that comes into the building. So there still is, you know, the potential enclosure and fencing that, that somebody could get to. In the, the service area immediately outside the kitchen, we are proposing some fencing there. You know, again, if somebody wants to climb over the fence, you know, they're gonna climb over the fence. But there's also a stair there too, near the loading dock area. And it's, so not the whole thing is, is fenced in. There's a lot going on right there in the service area.
And I see Chris has his hand up and I'm gonna go to him in a minute, but I just, I have a concern with the precast. How, how is that held up for you over time? Especially with this being in a playground area which will be plowed, which means it's gonna have salt. Right? There's gonna be some sort of ice melt, probably at greater quantities than anyone recommends. Have these held up well or? Because again, this is a panel that's going from thirty-four inches down below grade. And I'm just, I'm concerned where it meets the grade and, you know, that foot eighteen inches up, what the chemical will do to it.
Okay. That's a great question. So I'm gonna have to research some of that. I know that we have used a similar, I had shown you some images early on of another project that's in New Britain, that had similarities in that we use the precast sill. And there is a roadway, there's a bus drop off, there's a roadway that goes around, around the building. And I'm, I can't recall specifically. I'm, I'm trying to recall how close the sidewalks and asphalt is to the building. And see how that's held up over time, because that has been there for, geez, is it? I don't know, ten, ten years maybe?
Concrete pavers hold up really well to the ice melt products. But we were on a project where they used a composite, like a sandstone, manufactured brownstone, so it looked like brownstone, but it was really just compressed sand. And on a, just, it was a facade on a concrete wall. It just held up miserably. The first eighteen inches of two feet are just disintegrating.
Okay.
And then this might work and if it does, I'm fine with it, but I just think we need to make sure that it should, that it will hold up. Because we're, we're gonna have a lot of it, correct? Up against pavement?
Yes, we're gonna have a lot of it.
Where it butts up against, you know, whether it be grass or, you know, non-paved services, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I will research that.
Yeah, Chris, you still had your hand up?
No, you just, that was my question. You just asked it and she just answered it.
All right, and Jeremy, I see your hands up?
Yep. Just a couple of questions on the renderings, if I may, and I, you know, I don't know if we're gonna get into some other stuff later on, probably, because we're just looking at the outside here. What I don't see here is, is drainage from the roof. I know the roof has been a problem. Is there, are there gutters? Where does the water drain to after roof? I noticed that there's a, there's a gutter in one picture here, but there's no low point in the other rendering down below. I don't know.
Sure. Yep. It's actually in, so instead of using gutters or anything, we're actually using internal roof drains. The, the quantity of drains is really determined by, we look at building code for the most part that tells us how many drains minimum per roof area. So there's going to be more roof drains per area than there is currently at the building. So we are getting rid of the old roof drainage, but there will still be central roof drains that will tie into the storm system, which, so there'll be new rainwater leaders that then tie into a storm system that runs below slab in the corridors. That's the, the plan right now, because we, we wouldn't necessarily want to have a gutter system in downspouts that don't tie into a storm system. And I don't know if it's unfortunate, but our storm system is internal to the building until it, it hits outside, you know, it does go out at some point, like over here, the storm system comes out. So that's the answer. The, and it's not a flat roof. There is a pitch to the roof, which is again, meeting code, quarter inch per foot and tapered insulation. So there are all slopes to the drains and then those drains get to an internal storm line that eventually exits the building.
Okay, and that's an improvement over existing.
Go, go ahead Jeremy, continue.
So I, I was just asking, that's an improvement over existing, I would assume, right?
The number of drains is, is improving and the slope of the, the the insulation on the roof, the fact that we're using tapered insulation to slope to the drains. I mean, you have standing water there now, not, things aren't moving, because in the 50s it, they, they didn't use tapered insulation. They weren't necessarily taping to, taper, tapering so much to a drain. So there's a lot of standing water now. It's just not getting movement to drains in the existing, on the existing roof. So you won't have those pounding water conditions, because all of the, the roof areas will slope right down to drain.
Okay. Uh, just, all right, thank you for that. And a couple of other things, I was just looking at the renderings. I know it's just kind of a probably upper base level sort of thing. I didn't see much lighting or cameras on the exterior of the building. I'm always thinking about security and IT and, you know, if we don't want kids climbing on the roof, you can always dissuade them with a nice fat camera. Sitting at the places where they would go up also. But, you know, proper lighting certainly. And then I wanted to, I've been harping on this the whole project. But the, the entryways that I see here, I, I see that, you know, it's a fully enclosed vestibule. Vestibule, is that how you pronounce that? Do you have any drawings up, up front about that, what this entryway looks like here and does it, is it secure? I mean, do we have cameras? Do we have locks, you know, that sort of thing?
Sure, so, great questions. There are, and I don't have it queued up. There is a security consultant on this project that has already met with, although we're gonna, we need to have some subsequent meetings. But we've met with the district and their security director, that's not his, his title, but exactly, but Mike Morgan with the school district. We've met with him, we've talked about access control, pretty detailed throughout the building. Where are control points? What are we, what doors to the exterior are we controlling? What doors are just, there's, there's even some exterior doors that won't have handles on the outside that they're really for exit only, so there's no one ever expected to need to get into certain doors. We've talked about that. We've, we've talked at length about the arrangement of when a visitor were to come into the main vestibule and how they would check in and not be allowed to step foot into the rest of the building, that they really are trapped, I guess you could call it, you know, a man trap in the vestibule, that they can't go further, because they would actually need to get buzzed into the exterior doors and then buzzed into the building again beyond that. So they really need to check in with the office. We are making some revisions to that vestibule and main office circulation a bit. So I have a plan, but it isn't up, the one that I have queued up here isn't up to date. So I don't want to confuse everybody by showing you something that, that isn't, isn't the last thing that we've, that we've discussed. There's, there is access control beyond exterior doors. There's access control at points inside the building too, and there's also doors planned in certain parts of the corridors that I could show you to some extent here, I think. There are points where if this is what's, the, the vestibule is not fully up to date here. We enlarged the vestibule. But as you walk through the building, if there were a situation during a, if there was a lockdown situation or whatever, what's pretty common now in schools is to have doors, these cross corridor doors that pretty much lock off each wing. If something were to happen and you go into a lockdown situation, these doors close and are locked and no one can get down that wing at all. People can always leave. You can leave in the direction of those doors. There's panic bars and you can leave, but you can't get through in, inboard. Just like in the vestibule in the main lobby, you can always get out through this direction, those panic bars on doors. But if you're not, if there's, but they're, they're locked going into the building, you need permissions to be able to go further in. Beyond access control, the cameras are, we have a plan already that have camera locations around the exterior and inside the building that were recommended by the security consultant. So that they would provide coverage all over the place. So we, although we've, we've specifically met with the school district on access controlled doors, which doors have it, which doors don't. We haven't run through the full security camera exercise. The design development set has a whole set of security drawings, which identify all this access control that we think you know, was in the right spot. And all the cameras, so there's plenty of, there's plenty of cameras shown. There's also cameras proposed for some light poles in order to cover parking areas where we might not be able to see something quite from the building. We do have plans to utilize some light poles for cameras as well. But we are still reviewing some of those details with the, with the school district to make sure we provide all the coverage that they want. Lighting wise, we developed a lighting plan, a site lighting plan and photometrics that have even been developed to make sure that we are meeting some minimal light levels around the site and in the parking lots. So we're looking at that lighting and there are lights at exterior doors, for instance. We need to light that path so people can get out safely. So there are lights at exterior doors, at canopies, they're typically in the canopy providing light down. At some other locations, they're on either side of the door, above the doorways. And I, I have a note to talk about some other lighting. Right now, Anna Reynolds has some, I wanted to discuss that with the, with the district too soon. We noted there are some like floodlights, some large lights that shine on the, on the back of the building or away from the back of the building. They're mounted to the back of the building and they provide some light for the backend and for the, the play areas. So we want to make sure that when we put new lights in, what exactly do they want covered? What do they want to see, you know? Beyond the cameras that are already planned and on the, the drawings for review, there's also some lights back there. So those, those meetings are happening. There's, there's a lot of detail to, you know, making sure we have coverage that the, the school district feels comfortable with.
Jeremy, do you have anything else?
No, thank you for those, those answers. I, you know, we certainly don't want to turn it into a prison by any means. You know, I, but there's a lot of nice discreet technology out there that will allow for a safe environment without, you know, having these, you know, like in the old days, it'd have these eyeballs looking at you down every corridor or whatever it was. And it'd be nice to see some of that here if we have the budget, you know, if we have the budget for it. I, I always think that lighting and cameras are a great deterrent and scare enemy waves and run away.
When they get the security drawings a little further along, Jeremy, I'll have them separated and we could send them to you, so you could take a look at them, okay? Break them out of the package. James, you had your hand up. I don't know if you want to share something with us?
Yes, because when we get into the further discussion after Jennifer's done presenting, I can show the anti-skid when we transition to the next topic. Anti-climb, I'm sorry.
Okay. And Steve, you had your hand up. I see that it's down, that your comment or question get brought up.
Well, no, I'm back to the drainage discussion of having it drain to the interior of the building and then down the center of the corridors underground. The, the thought that flashed through my mind was what happened to us at John Wallace at the gymnasium where an elbow on an internal drain line fell down. We, our maintenance of our facilities is not as strong as it should be. And so there was no inspection until we had a nice rainstorm and then the entire gym floor was destroyed. That caused, that caused the the school system at the time to implement, I believe, some insurance. Lou can keep me honest on this one, but I've never liked the concept of letting any water enter a building at any point. So having the drainage drop in through vertical drain pipes and then hit the sewer that's below the wing in the mid, I'm presuming in the middle corridor. I'm just witnessing or asking myself how that, how do we maintain it? And make sure that we don't have future water disasters inside of the building?
Just making your note here. I want to say that what you're, the unfortunate problem that you have, I, I want to say that that's not really a a common thing, but that it is fairly common to have in, in large schools and everything, to have internal drains. And then typically, typically that failure isn't happening. One of the reasons why we didn't propose an external drainage system was frankly because of the, we have the storm drains existing in the building now. And for us to bring storm drainage around the perimeter of the building on the outside and all the site work required around the perimeter of the building to bring new storm drains and hit all the inverts that we need to hit. We were concerned that that would be cost prohibitive.
Okay, and I, my concern, my concern is fine, it's just me being me. If, if the drainage system at Anna Reynolds is all ready. If, if the drainage system at Anna Reynolds is already internal and it exists and we're just basically leveraging that, I, I don't have an issue, it's just a matter of I guess having an appropriate maintenance plan to check the drain system to make sure it remains functional, but thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Chris Minor? And then Mike Camillo.
Thanks Steve, yeah, just a follow up on Steve's comments, as long as they're doing everything above ground as being no, I don't think we're going to have any issues similar to what we experienced down at the Wallace project, where I believe was a fern called it failed and it was that simple. So if everything is new from above, at least below, down to grade, we should be in good shape, thanks.
Okay, Mike?
If I remember right, the reason we have the drains going through the middle of the building is so the water doesn't freeze and we don't have a damming problem. Is that true? Is that why they go with that type of design?
I don't know why they did that in particular, you know, in the 50s of course, but you know, when they're excavating for the, the building back in the 50s and they're excavating to do foundations and everything, you know, perhaps they thought it was, there's a lot of perimeter, there's, there's a lot of perimeter of the building coming, you know, just doing the wings, you know, two lines in the wing and across the, the front, the front area is a lot less storm drainage than having to bring lines all the way around the perimeter of Anna Reynolds. That difference. I don't think there's a, I don't think that there's a freezing issue really, I mean, the storm, the storm drainage on the exterior would need to be the rainwater leaders, if we were to do that, the rainwater leaders would enter a storm system and those lines would be where, you know, appropriate down below grade, you know, to avoid some of that, that, that concern that you would have about freezing.
The other thing is the storm drain, have we looked at that and made sure that it didn't start collapsing anywhere? Did we go through it with a camera and see?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing that actually, Marty might report on that. That we actually requested getting lines scoped so that we know what the condition is.
And we approved that at the last meeting, Mike. Have, have the, all the drainage scoped with a camera, so I believe that's going to take place soon.
Okay.
All the, all the risers, Mike, are also getting completely replaced new.
Okay. The, that is it doesn't go to a sanitary, it goes right to a storm drain.
Yeah, you can't go into sanitary anymore.
I, I know we can't, but they did in the 50s, so that's why.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if there are some that still are that way, we would have to correct them through this process. Chris, I see your hand up again.
Yeah, just a quick follow up to that, the lining process now is available for anything underground that might be compromised or questionable. You've got flow out linings that can be done with, you know, with no excavation, so that's an option as we get along.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Jennifer, do you have anything else for us?
The only thing I was going to say is there's still upcoming meetings, just our process, that there's still meetings that we will be having with the school district. We are preparing to discuss where we're headed for some soft cost, soft project costs, I guess. Things like furniture and technology, which are not part of the construction costs, but certainly part of the project costs. And we want to get an understanding of how the school district wants to handle that so that we get an appropriate number plugged in, there is a number plugged in right now in the budget. So that's not being ignored, but we want to make sure that that number, hone in on it, that that number is appropriate for what wants to be done as they wrap up construction and need to outfit the school.
Jennifer, let me ask you on that, is, is there concern that there's a long lead time for that equipment now? As some other things, or is it something that we want to maybe act on a little bit earlier because of the delays? Or the length of time in securing some of these materials? Or is it premature to make those decisions?
I think it's, I think it's premature to make those decisions, I, we've been hearing a lot of random delays with various building product, products and, and things. I haven't necessarily heard problems getting furniture at this point, that there's been a, a delay in that, it seems that our projects are still moving along with furniture, furniture installations. I've been hearing more issues with building
Building materials.
Components, roof insulation is an issue, windows are taking longer. So there are various building components that, that I think would impact us more so than furniture. And I think the furniture is out enough that it's really hard to predict what that's going to do.
Yeah, I, I would agree, we're, we are out of ways on that. Steve?
Yeah, thank you, furniture's always been a nice discussion point, the one item that I'm really worried about is, is that I understand furniture, but if we start, if the, if the school system starts coming in and starts asking for like technological smart boards, projectors, other items that we currently have installed. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not we want to bear the burden of all of this additional technology when the existing technology is appropriate. I, I'd just like to see what the recommendations are. Because furniture can go down a rabbit hole really, really quick. So, I mean, I, I do understand the need for the furniture and as such, but it can quickly take a project over budget immediately from the wish list that would be coming in from the school system, so it's what I'm just trying to lay the groundwork on is, is that it needs a little, little bit of careful review and evaluation of what we need versus what they want. Given the existing technology that's already in the building. So
Yeah, Steve, that, that will come, it doesn't just get picked by staff and, and the architects, it comes back to us, it will be approved.
Okay, all right, thank you, I mean, that, yeah. Everything I've been witnessing thus far, I, I haven't seen that loop so mu, as readily available, but I appreciate hearing that, Steve, thank you.
All right.
We have had discussions with the with the entities in the district about classroom technologies, so they do have recommendations of what they'd like to do where they think that the district is going moving forward with technology. And being that, you know, technology as we know changes a lot, by the time they move into the finished spaces, you know, we're still you know, at least a couple of years out. So we are planning for new technology, I can share more specifics on what kind of classroom technology is planned for. And, you know, I guess that might be a, a discussion between the building committee and the school district whether to plan that way or not.
I think if you, if you put a plan together with, you know, FFNE, right, when you're at that point that you, you think you've narrowed it down, then, then come to us.
Right, well, we actually, as far as classroom technology goes, we have narrowed it down because that is something because there is, there's wiring and conduit and, you know, things that need to be planned for in construction, that infrastructure needs to be there. Power where they want, you know, if it's a smart board, if it's a TV, whatever it is, we need to plan for that power now, not in the furniture stage of game.
And I understand that, I, I don't think Mr. Sylvia is questioning that, not the infrastructure, I think he's more talking about the equipment, right, so yes, we need whatever it's going to take to power that equipment there. It's, do we buy that equipment or do we have that equipment, that's, I think what he's trying to get at.
Yes, yes, I, I also don't want to create a technological marvel that the other schools do not have, and then it creates an imbalance across the entire district that so it, it's, it's what I consider to be an equitable solution as far as equipment being identified versus furniture being identified, so I, I will be interested in understanding the technological solution when it's presented to the committee, thank you.
Okay. That's all I have, oh, are there, are there any more questions?
Before you, I don't see anybody else seeing.
Jeremy has his hand up.
Jeremy, okay, Jeremy, go ahead.
I think with the IT stuff, and that's kind of what I do. Everybody's kind of afraid of technology because it's very expensive and I, and I totally get that, I think, I think what I would like to see is, you know, surely every district has a five year technology program. Most do, I know that there's a replay, it's a revolving five year plan for equipment. And I, I would assume maybe Newington does. But when we get to start talking about the smart boards and I think they're even moving away from the smart boards now because of the projector aspect, projectors are really kind of fading out and they're going with these large TVs that are very interactive now. These clear touch units. So I, I think it's important for us to kind of look at that as a committee too, and just make sure that some of that stuff isn't getting smuggled in to our budget when it's part of the, the board's budget anyway. I guess, I guess that would be our only concern.
Thank you, Jeremy, that was my point, it, it's a question of whether or not it's part of this budget or is part of the Board of Education and Newington Public Schools to evaluate in their planning, thank you.
Go ahead, Marty, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, if, if I may, I just want to assure the committee that it's our intent to stay within the budgets that have been established for both technology and FFNE. And I know you're also concerned about wish list items, but you know, it's our goal to stick with what is in the ed spec. So the ed spec is pretty specific about what new technology can go in the building, so that is really our starting point. If there are additional requests, we still need to stay within that budget, so Jennifer and I, along with, you know, the appropriate, the appropriate town staff are going to start meeting and flushing out both the technology and the FFNE. So ultimately, you'll be presented with a package and we'll be able to give you cost information and we'll be able to report on what is covered in the ed spec and what is not. So everything will go before the committee for a vote.
Thank you, the only reason why I, I have this caution. And thank you, Ms. List Guy, I definitely appreciate that. I witnessed change controls occurring at the town hall that was not brought back before the Board of Education that was done on the third floor. And it cost the town more money. But it didn't have the appropriate approvals. And I referenced the additional steel to reinforce the floors on the third floor for the and the cost associated with that, and then the customized cabinetry that was placed on the third floor. So it's just a little bit of a sensitivity that I have, but I, I definitely look forward to the discipline and the focus on maintaining the budget, thank you very much.
Okay, Lou, you had your hand up a while back, is there something that you wanted to share with us?
No, the conversation went around to the scoping of the lines for the storm drains. And that's all I was going to bring up, that that was in the works, so. Somebody beat me to it, I can't remember who it was that spoke on the subject, that's all.
All right. All right, I think we're done with the architect's report, we're going to move on to the owner's project manager, again, which Marty, you can have a floor again. Give us your update on where you're at, I know that you guys have been meeting on a regular basis, working through the plans, budgets.
That was the anti-climb. Just as a follow up.
And where is that mounted, James?
We have that located over the entrance area for the gymnasium, the entrance to the right side of it, if you're looking at the building from Mill Pond Park. So because that has such a close step up from the railway, you can sort of get to it with a, just a quick boost up. And I think you can actually catch off of the hill and catch up on it as well. So that was added at the, the top of the roof line to prevent the climbing.
Okay, is it more attractive when it's installed than it is in the cut sheet?
You don't even see it, Steve, the way it's set up is it's almost on the the edge of the roof deck itself where the cap flashing is, so you don't even really see it at all.
Okay, I'll check it out. All right, thanks, James.
No problem.
Yeah, okay, Marty, go ahead.
Okay, so just to build on what Lou mentioned about scoping the plumbing lines, so yes, we have the plumber set to go into the school on two half days, October 26th and November 16th, we've coordinated that with the school principal, and we're also going to take advantage of the November 2nd election day. No school day, of course, we won't be doing any work in the, in the gym or cafeteria where voting may be going on, but it'll be a good opportunity for us to scope the lines on those, on that day as well, so. Couple other things, we do have coming up shortly our next meeting with the Office of School Construction Grants. On, I think we're targeting Jennifer, November 9th. So we will be arranging for that meeting and that meeting basically is to review our design development documents with the state. So that is coming up. Another update, we've had, I believe it's our third phasing meeting today at the school between Newfield, KBA, myself, the school principal, Lou's been there, Maureen, the principal, so I'm happy to say that the group collectively has approved a phasing plan that was presented by Newfield today. And they're going to be updating that plan based on some comments that were made. And they'll be presenting that to the building committee in the near future. But I'm confident that we've come up with a plan that minimizes the disruption to the school, yet allows the contractor to take large enough areas of the building to you know, be productive, so that'll be something that Tom Demora will be presenting, oh, probably in two more meetings. So we're just finalizing a couple more of the details. And they'll be able to present that, so let's see, what else? I'm also wanted to talk, Steve, maybe we can talk afterwards, or if you could provide a recommendation, Jennifer and I, and of course, Newfield still need a decision from the building department, if they are going to be able to do an in-house plan review or if that's going to a third party, so any, any suggestions you can offer, if, if we should contact them directly or?
You want me to reach out to the town manager and see how he wants us to handle it, okay? And then let me talk to Keith first and then I'll get back to you.
All right, that'd be great. And I also believe there's been a lot of behind the scenes work by KBA getting ready for the inland, the local inland wetlands review meeting, so that will also be coming up. I would say mid-November. And lastly, we understand that planning and zoning did provide the 824 approval, but Jennifer is still going to But Jennifer is still gonna reach out to Renata at Planning and Zoning to see if, if she wants, you know, a review meeting. Um, kind of concurrently with the inland wetlands folks of the project.
Of the site plan, of the, yeah.
Yes. Yep. So again, that'll also be coming up in mid-November. Also, just, um, from our last meeting, I did do a scope review meeting with, uh, IES, who was our low bidder for commissioning services. And I'm happy to say that they were confident that they had a complete scope for commissioning. Uh, both the mechanical commissioning and the exterior envelope, although their price was significantly lower than the next bidder. They shared with me that their office is about a mile away from the school. So that is going to keep their labor relatively low. They have no drive time whenever they have to come to the site. And myself, I, all of us, KBA, Newfield, definitely CSG has worked with IES on several projects and they're extremely qualified and actually wonderful to work with. So I am happy that they are going to be our commissioning agent and they were, um, given a, I gave them a notice of award, an informal notice of award. Jeff Barron is preparing their contract. And we've already sent them the design development package and they are in the process of doing their review. And they'll follow up with a report afterwards with any recommendations. So they have been introduced to the project team and are, uh, already working.
Yes, uh, Marty, on that, um, just to, to let you know too, um, we have, we have already had a, um, a virtual meeting with them to go over some, some basics and, and get them up to speed and familiar with where we're at and why some decisions were made. So,
Excellent.
So far it's smooth. Yep.
That's great. That's wonderful. So that's about it for me for today, unless anyone has any specific questions.
Yeah, I know. I see Chris has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Just going back to what we were talking about before on the third-party plan review. Uh, that's something that I would advocate strongly for. And the only reason I say that is it, A, has a tendency to be able to be achieved in a quicker timeframe. B, it releases some of the liability and onus from the term, from any liability that the town may incur by doing its own internal review. And the last point being that by its cost and by the level of staff that we've got to do the workload of a lot of projects that are coming through the pipeline. I'm just concerned that, you know, this potentially could have a, a delay or get timed out on, uh, so many projects running through concurrently.
Yeah, and I, and I hear you, Chris, but just so we're clear, it is not our decision to make. It is the, the building department, the building inspector and fire marshal. They have the, the call on that, whether they choose to do it in-house or out. We, we can make a recommendation. Um, but it's, it's up to them. And then they still have to sign off, so.
I mean, ultimately, correct. You're, you're correct that they do sign off. But Marty, have you seen a cost on that? On any recent projects that you guys have done?
We have it in our line item. There's a, for a budget. I don't remember what it is, but what, do you know what we're carrying, Marty?
I, I can look it up. Um, we are, as you said, carrying money for it. And I don't really honestly have a, have a order of magnitude. Although I believe, if you bear with me, that we looked at the cost in the budget and felt that it was adequate. Um, let me see what I can pull up here.
Yeah, cause I know that a lot of municipalities have gone this direction just because how detailed so many plans could be in a project this guy, you know, this size to have, you know, two to three hundred pages of detail to go through.
Absolutely.
That it?
So, yeah.
That's all I got. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. I will text Keith tonight and probably hear back from him, um, in a day or so. And I'll let you know, Marty.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Any other?
Marty, what, what were we carrying? I think you were about to say what it was.
Yeah, I, I don't see where we carried a separate line item for that. So that cost would come out of our contingency.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, no other questions, correct? We're gonna move on. Tom, you're up. Uh, construction managers update. Do you have anything for us?
Uh, not much more than what's already been said. Um, we're working on the DD estimate, um, just as in the schematic design period, um, we have a good dialogue going back and forth with the, the, the design team. I'm gonna finish that up at the end of the month. And as Marty's, uh, mentioned, we are, uh, have, have a phasing plan that's been approved and we're gonna dig into that and get into those details.
Okay, and I've been hearing the same thing, Tom, that everybody is working very well together and working towards, uh, you know, a common solution to try to get this job done, um, for the, the least amount of time and the least amount of dollars, but to meet all of the specifications that we need to. And, um, again, your, your role's gonna go from a small one to a big one in a short period of time. And actually, you kind of go away, right? And we'll end up with, uh, whoever the, the project manager is um, on a day-to-day thing. But, uh, I want to thank you for the work that you've done to get us to where we are. And, um, I know you're not going away right away, but.
You're welcome.
Yeah, but it's, uh, it's nice to see things starting to come together. Any questions for Tom? Let's see, nothing. Uh, let's see, any other business pertinent to committee? Um, Jeff, do you anything that we, we already talked about the eight dash twenty-four? We're through that. Um, I will find out, uh, what the fire marshal and building inspector are gonna do, whether it'll be a local review or a third-party review. Um, and we'll report back to everybody once we find out what they're gonna do.
I don't know if you want to plan on having a meeting on November fourth or not.
Yeah, let's set it up for the fourth. Again, James reminded me, and he's a hundred percent correct, as I should never doubt our town clerk, that even though, uh, the elections have taken place, whoever is on this committee remains until someone is appointed in their place. So, uh, let's, let's plan on having it. Uh, if, if there is no reason to have it when we get a little bit closer, um, we can cancel it, but let's, let's keep it on.
Very well.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, public participation brings us back to that. And we do have one member, uh, listening in. If you would like to speak to us, um, you are welcome to. And James, help me here. How does he or she?
Uh, she's on her phone, so she can use star nine to be recognized and star six to unmute once recognized.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, James.
No.
That's a little public participation. I don't remember. It appears no, correct?
Doesn't look like we have an interest at this time.
Alright. Now, any comments by the members? Yes, Jeremy?
Yeah, just wanted to say, uh, I'm really proud of this committee despite the, uh, sound, the signs I'm seeing around town that we're stalling and that we need to fast track. Um, I, I, I'm, I, I don't know how this can go any faster. Honestly, we're making progress every, every time we meet. And, um, I just want to thank the committee and everybody that is working with us, uh, to show us these drawings to, to, you know, uh, to get us, you know, on the timeline and keep us going. Um, I think we're doing great despite all that. Uh, it's unfortunate it has to show up in political season, but why wouldn't it? And, um, uh, let's keep up the good work.
Thank you. As I tell everybody, silly season is over in two weeks, right? And um, but you gotta deal with whatever it is. And, and again, I, I think some of it's been on social media, but um, when I did the eight dash twenty-four, I was questioned by one of the counselors and I spoke the truth. Every time we've gone to the council and asked them, uh, for action, they've taken care of us. So then that's, that is the truth. Um, if there's some stuff going on the side, it hasn't entered into this committee's official business. Um, so as far as I'm concerned, it's not happening, right? So with that, a motion to adjourn. So, no moves. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
What was that, James?
Commissioner Sylvia had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve. I didn't see it.
No, Steve Sylvie took his hand down. I'd rather be dismissed.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye again.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
Just in time, my lights went out.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.